Well, welcome. Again, tonight, we're going to meet somebody who, if you see him, if you go down to his establishment, say thank you, because he's one of the people who not only can say there's better ways of taking care of our children, but is willing to work towards it. You know, as I've said a couple of times, it's very easy for somebody to complain or to have ideas, but it's very rare that people will give their own time and step up and actually do the things we need to make Milford stronger and better for our kids. As always, I've made a promise, I'll never ask you to vote for any specific candidate, but I'll beg you to vote. So hopefully, you take a few minutes, listen, and see if our new candidate tonight is somebody who you believe in and who you believe will take care of our kids. So let's start with an introduction.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Michael Agagianian, and I'm a lifelong resident of Milford, and I'm really flattered to be here on the show.
More importantly, you're a member of the Heights.
Yes, yes. My father grew up in the Heights many years ago, an Armenian family. You know, his parents were from Armenia, and so, you know, I go back, I think I'm a third generation here in Milford.
Have you been to Armenia?
No, I have not. My mother is English, so I've been to England and Ireland many times, but not Armenia.
I'm trying to think. It's been at least 25 years since I went to Armenia. I think I've been there about six times.
The good news is my mother learned to cook from my grandmother, so I grew up eating Armenian food, such obviously as shish kebab. I can make baklava, latmijin.
So you got the good stuff.
Yeah, the really good stuff, and lamb, the Armenians make lamb, so it's so good.
You know, it was funny, when we were at Harvard Bio, we were working on regenerative organs, and when we wanted to do work on lamb lungs to regenerate them, the Armenians and the Greeks became our worst nemesis because of Greek Easter and all. All the lambs went away.
Yeah, gone, yeah, yeah.
So you had to plan your research to not run into that, or you were paying a fortune to try and steal the lamb for your research.
Yeah.
Mike, we start off the show, every show, and we end up with the same question. "I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?"
Well, I think that's a valid and great question. You know, I'm a father, I'm a husband, I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, I'm a former business executive, I'm also an entrepreneur, and also a business owner. So I have this unique skill set where I've managed budgets of tens of millions of dollars. I've managed staff of 500, 600, so I am very familiar with, you know, running large organizations and making sure we're fiscally on track. But I also have a passion to give back to the community, and teaching has always been a kind of a core of my personality, and I love to learn and I love to teach. It's always been, my management style is actually teaching, you know. And so I think I have this unique toolbox to bring to the school committee. I've sat on boards before, I understand how meetings are supposed to run, I understand large structures, but again, most importantly, it's the passion to give back to our community and, you know, giving back, especially to children, and education, I think, is so critical to how we operate in our future. Also, my wife has, you know, been a school teacher in Milford High School for 13 years, so I have a unique insight into the school system. We talk about the school system almost every single day. A lot of our friends are also teachers or administrators, so I've been hearing and listening about our district for at least 13 years. I know at least five or six past school community members very well, you know, so I've talked to them at length over the past four or five years. So I think I have a pretty good insight into our district and our challenges, our opportunities, and I'm excited to share that.
Well, it must be exciting having your wife back in the school that you went to.
Yeah, it's a quick, funny story. My wife is not from Milford, she's from North Carolina, where I met her when I was in the Marine Corps. And when she moved up here, of course, she got a job subbing in the high school. And so one day, Arlene Pearson called her up and said, "Report to House A for tomorrow morning." And my wife turned to me and said, "I don't know what House A is," because that's a very Milford thing.
Yes.
And so I said to her, "Do you need me to bring you to school tomorrow?" She said, "Yes," so I did. Brought her to the school, and that was the first time in at least 10 years I stepped into the school, and it was really nice. It was a nice, warm welcome, seeing a lot of familiar faces. So, yeah, it's been a ride. And then another quick, funny story, when you're a new teacher, you have to do a lot of the chaperoning, right? And so she asked me to prom, and that was a weird, odd experience, because I, you know, she was a teacher, and so I'm like, "You're asking me to prom to my old high school." And so, of course, I went, and it was actually great, you know, it was a good time. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's always wild, because I end up going back. My daughter's involved, she's at the high school, and she's involved with the special needs kids and the best buddies programs.
Yeah.
So you go back to the cafeteria, you know, for the dances, and you go into the areas she's helping the kids with, and you still, you feel like, okay, I'm home. That high school just feels the same as when I went there.
Yeah, it's very nostalgic. You know, I get that feeling every time I walk in, even smells the same, if that sounds silly. But, yeah, it's a very familiar place. Obviously, that's where, if you're from Milford and went through the school system, especially the high school, you get that sense of home and community, because high school kids spend a lot of time at high school, you know, learning, sports, music, et cetera, et cetera. So they're spending 10, 12 hours a day there, and I think people forget that these kids are there a lot, you know.
It's always been something, because as a parent of a high school child, I had to fight to get an hour or two a day with my daughters, because they're always running to some club, some, something. And then you figure, like you said, there could be 10 hours a day in the high school or related to high school activities that the school committee is designing. So in my mind, this is one of the most important decisions that parents of Milford children make, is who's going to be at the helm of the high school curriculum and everything that goes on. You know, it's just amazing to me. But we start with a basic question. What do you think of the three biggest challenges that you would face as a school committee member?
Well, you know, when you're a school committee member, you're on a board, and that board is entrusted by the community to take the $60 or $70 million of the taxpayers' money to invest it into the school system. So I look at the board as, really, they're the owners of the school system, right? And so those seven people are entrusted to invest that money, right? So it's, if you went to, if you had some money and you wanted to invest it, you want to know that those people are smart, they know what they're doing, they have experience. And I think we sometimes forget that the, how important is this committee is. They run 60% to 65% of our town budget. 80% of our town employees are in the school system. So this group of seven, it's not a fun PTO group, it is an actual group that manages a large, large organization with public money, right? And so the three challenges, I think, one, just, you know, running financially that budget is a big undertaking. It requires strong communication to the finance committee, you know, because ultimately, it goes to town meeting to vote on, and, you know. So I think making sure that the district is accountable for the funds, I think that's very important to me, that, you know, if a taxpayer looks in, we can see where that money is being spent. I think another one, disadvantaged students is close to my heart, and disadvantaged students can be a variety of things. My wife, when she was first a teacher, I never saw the other side, as I call it, or the side of the teacher. And the teachers, remember, are sitting in a classroom, they're looking at their students, and they are exposed to their lives, not just academics. And my wife's an English teacher, and so she learns a lot about the kids, because they're very interactive. Well, one of these kids, early on her career at the high school, he was homeless, and he was bouncing around between couches, and if you met him in public, you would not have even thought this kid was homeless. And then just learning from her, actually, how many homeless or hungry kids there are in our community, it's surprising, and it makes me a little upset, you know, and want to get more involved, because ultimately, if a kid is not stable, meaning if they're hungry, or if they don't know where they're going to be that night, they're not going to do well in school, right? Because their focus is living and surviving.
Eating.
Eating, yeah. And so I think, and then the other disadvantaged students, I mean, of course, there's a whole variety, but is English learners. You know, we have a large influx of English learners in our community, which I think is great, but it provides, there's an opportunity for us here. And so I think, you know, making sure that our district has a strong plan to manage and make sure that those kids who are disadvantaged are not hungry at school, they're doing well, and that we have resources to help them assimilate and learn the language. And that directly affects our scores, and so I think that's all tied together, and I could talk about this for a long time. But I think those are the big issues that I think we have in our school system today, you know, making sure that, you know, we're fiscally accountable, you know, and making sure our disadvantaged students are taken care of, because I think as a community, that is our job as a community. You know, no matter where they come from, is, you know, they're children on our doorstep, we can't turn away from them, we have to help them, we should help them, we want to help them. So I think those are, I mean, there's some big challenges in our district right now.
Well, when you look at, we're reaching 40% of kids on reduced or free lunches and breakfasts. I mean, that really says a lot, that almost half our kids are living in homes with very limited income.
Yeah.
What do you do as a school committee? I mean, when we were kids, the job of the teachers in Milford was to educate our children. Now, I think, not only are we expecting them to educate them, but to raise them. What can you do as a school committee to help the teachers? Because, you know, what they signed up for and what they have is very, very different today.
I think so. I don't have experience with you growing up, obviously, but I think we have some really hard challenges, and going back to just the hunger, right? I think, you know, we have a great school lunch and breakfast program, and when I learned that that goes through the summer, because sometimes there are, these kids come to school because it's the only place they can eat, again, that hits home, and I think the community needs to know more about that, because as a community, we need to come together. But as a school committee member, you know, the way we can influence that, because that's a policy-setting board, we as a community, again, I, as a school committee member, I will be the custodian of these resources, and now as a community, we decide where the resources go, right? And so if we need to spend more resources to make sure kids are hungry, because if they're, sorry, are fed, so they're not hungry in class, because if they're hungry, their scores go down, which affects the community, then we need to do that. We need to figure out how to make sure these kids are fed. You know, as far as raising them, you know, that's, I think, a whole nother topic, but as far as, you know, making sure the basic needs are met, I think it's our moral obligation to make sure, you know, we as a community come together and make sure kids are fed and they're not hungry coming to school, because ultimately, that will affect test scores.
You know, I bring up the fact that the teachers are expected to do more than just educate, because I've seen it. You know, when I was in school, the worst thing you could threaten to do is tell my parents that I embarrassed the family. Now, my father never took a hand to me, but I think he'd hit me upside the head with a two-by-four if he ever really saw me being disrespectful to a teacher. I can't say that anymore. There used to be, you could joke about things like that. Today, it's serious. But he would not be accepting of me being disrespectful. Today, oh my God, what the kids say and do in school is shocking.
I'm not sure I actually agree with you on that. I think kids are kids. I think throughout the generations, children are children, and they act very similarly, whether it was 50 years ago or now or in the future, teenagers are teenagers, you know. There are different ways they communicate, there are different ways that they do things, but I think they're very similar behaviors, and I think the reason I think like this is because I see my friends who are teachers, and I hear how they talk. And there are still many parents out there that hold their kids to higher standards. Now, however, I do agree, there are a lot of parents out there who are, you know, helicopter bombs, and they now have more access to teachers. You know, one of the things that always surprised me is that, you know, a parent or a child can go ahead and now, a student can email a teacher 24/7. And that, going to what you're saying, is that the teachers are expected to do more. You know, when I was in high school, you know, when your school they ended, that was it, the teachers went home, and you didn't have access to your teachers. You know, now, the teachers, the students and parents have access to these teachers 24/7, and I think, I won't say it's an issue, but it's definitely a new challenge. You know, I know my wife and her friends will be sitting there emailing parents and students, you know, at 8 o'clock at night, because they're worried about test scores. So I think we just have a different set of challenges in today's world. I don't think they were, I don't think kids were any better 30 years ago, I think they were just different social pressures.
And that could be it, because we have a lot of kids that are being raised in a single-parent family. How they do it, Mike, I don't know. I mean, when I was coaching, and I saw, you know, a single dad or a single mom, and I said, "My God, I got my wife, my darling bride, myself, and my sainted mother, trying to keep up with two kids." How does a single parent do it?
Well, my mother was a single parent.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. My father died, you know, when I was very young, and she was a social worker, you know, so she raised me by herself, and I'm an only child, so it was tough for her, because she had to balance being at work and then also making sure that, you know, obviously, I had closed my back and fed and after-school activities, and it was tough, you know, and she's, if you ever met her, she's a very, very strong lady, and made all the ends meet for me, which was fantastic. But I also learned some independence from that as well, too. You know, I learned, you know, how to do things a little earlier for myself, because my mother wasn't sitting there doing it for me, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think I felt the same way, because my parents came over from Portugal. Whatever they needed to do, they would do, but they were limited. You know, I remember how many times I was so proud of my father, being in the audience at a school event, not having any idea what was going on, but somebody told him that you should show up.
But he was there.
He was there, you should show up.
Yeah.
You know, and he put on his little hat and his coat, and he sat through the whole, whatever the event was. And that, just seeing my mom and dad out there, just meant so much to me. And it's got to be harder for kids who don't have two parents, you know, because the mom has to split between, or the dad has to decide which child's school event they go to. I don't know how to make that easier on them.
Right, I don't think we can. I think you hit it in the head when you said, you just, you know, as a parent, you just have to do certain things, and it doesn't matter, you know, the world has given you that situation, you just have to deal with it, because you're a parent, you know.
Now, you mentioned test scores. One of the things we get criticized for as a town is that our test scores are lower. The MCAS scores are lower than many towns around us. Do you have any comments on that?
I do. I think, yeah, our scores are lower. When you dissect the scores, it's, you know, it comes down to the English learners. We have a, I would say, a language barrier right now, where we, again, this influx of students are coming into the school, and they don't know English, or they know very little English. And our district at the moment doesn't really have a district-wide plan to address this volume. And so I think there needs to be, I think the superintendent and the administration of the school system needs to be directed by the community to say, "Hey, we need a district-wide plan to solve this problem," because at the end of the day, if our scores continue to slip, it's going to affect property values, which affects all of us. So this is a problem that we have to solve, right? Well, when the children's on our doorstep in the school system, we have to accept them. You know, the Supreme Court ruled on that, there's no question. So we need to sit there and figure out, okay, well, how do we solve the problem? And I actually think, I tend to be a little bit more, I see opportunities everywhere, and the English learners come up a lot, and we in this town, we naturally speak multiple languages. How many languages do you speak?
Now, only three.
Yeah.
I mean, years ago, three more, but...
Yeah, so, you know, so our community naturally speaks three or four languages fluently. So this is a problem that we can solve in our community, like, we have the resources to solve this, but we just need a plan. And, you know, I know at the high school, for the past couple of years, there's been some high school teachers, I think Liz Alagretza was one of them, who's volunteering her time to teach after-school Portuguese classes for the English, for the high school teachers to help them communicate to their students. So there's a willingness in our community to solve this problem. We need a plan. I know the high school's been trying out kind of co-teaching, where they bring in another teacher who can speak the language, and they're in the classroom with the students, kind of translating and helping them learn English and assimilate in the classroom. And I think that's the right way to do it. I think we need to look at other states like California and Texas and Florida, who have had these issues for many decades and learned from them, but at the end of the day, I think this is something that the school committee needs to, you know, work with and charge a superintendent to come up with a district-wide plan, so the district itself feels like we know where we're going. And I also feel that we need to work closely with the selectmen and the finance committee as well, too. This is a town problem, this isn't just a school problem, this is a whole town problem, and we need to come together as a community to solve this. But like I said, I think it's solvable. We have the resources in our town, we have strong foreign language departments, we have naturally bilingual and trilingual residents of Milford all over the place. Another idea was, you know, there are little internships that I know the high school bus, high school seniors or high school students to the lower grades for various other activities. So why couldn't we incorporate, you know, if you're a high school senior and you speak fluent Portuguese, and you want to give some time back, why can't we have an internship program that sends that student down to Woodland, and they actually sit in a classroom with a teacher and help teach English to the child who can only speak Portuguese? So again, I think there's a lot of opportunities, and I think we can solve it as a community, but we need to come together and really attack this, and don't be afraid of it.
But how do you think we're doing overall? You chose to send your son to Milford School System.
No, my daughter's three and a half.
Oh, your daughter.
Yeah, so she'll be entering in 2021, and, yeah, she will enter the school system, and I'm very proud of it.
So you'll send her to Milford?
I will.
And you feel she'll get a good education?
I do.
You know, there's been a lot of talk about our scores, and it was interesting, because I've always said the man who taught me was a fellow named Tommy Davron, and he ran Middle School East as if it was his own fiefdom.
Yeah.
And not in a bad way.
Yeah.
He felt you gave me 360 kids, and it's my responsibility to shepherd them, to help them. And I remember walking in and asking him why the test score sucked, and he immediately looked at me and said, "Because you're ignorant." And I said, "Great, enlighten me." And he walked me through, because he was very clear when he said, "I'll put our top kids up against any town around us, and we won't come up short."
Absolutely, and I actually feel the same. I was lucky to be a judge for Academic Decathlon. My wife is a coach for their team, and the kids, it's a statewide, what's it, national program, and they compete. They get this, a topic they have to study, and they do presentations, they do interviews, they do essays, and we came in the top three, and we're competing against schools all in Massachusetts. And so it's, we, our kids, they go to Harvard, they go to MIT. I know in my group of friends, when I was in high school, I mean, I can start listing off PhDs, and so I agree with you 100%. I think, again, when you dissect the numbers, it comes down to the English language, the English learners, they struggle, because they're just getting here, and these kids don't know the language, and so we need to help them assimilate and adapt to the school system so we can get their scores appropriately.
And I mean, realistically, we're not the dumbest people, we're not the smartest people, but I don't know how well I would do. I do know, I would stink if he put me into a class and said, "In a year, you're taking a general test in Mandarin. So I'm going to learn math, you know, language, history, all in Mandarin." In the first year or so, it would take me just to understand the questions, and yet, like you say, that's what we're doing to our English language learners. We're sticking them in the school, saying, "Okay, learn the academic subjects, at the same time you're learning to speak English." It amazes me.
It does, but also remember, you know, kids are like sponges, right? Especially if you started earlier. You know, they pick up language very, very quickly. And so I coached the JV boys soccer team a couple of years ago, and on that team, you know, we, I had 28 kids, and I would say 10 of them really didn't speak much English coming into it. And by the end of the soccer season, which is two and a half, three months, those 10 kids were speaking much better English. And so I think we, you know, as we get older, we still can learn new things, but we might learn a little slower, and you have to remember, when you're a kid, you pick up things very quickly, and when you have to pick something up, you focus on it. And so now you're immersing them into this program, and they have to learn English, you know, they have no choice. And so I don't think it's unfair, I think it's just what has to be done.
How did you pick soccer?
For what?
To coach.
Coach? I love soccer. I grew up playing soccer in Milford, and we had a new JV coach, and I just reached out to him and said, "Hey, do you need help?"
That's because you're young. When I grew up, we had to go to Franklin. I remember there was only one team, one soccer team in Milford, it was a Portuguese club.
Yeah.
And if you weren't born playing soccer, you weren't making that team.
Yeah.
So we had to go all the way to Franklin, so...
Yeah, so, yeah, I volunteered and worked it out, and I coached for a season with them, and actually, this year, they made it all the way to the state, the state champions. They, I think, got second. So it's a great program. Brian Edwards and his staff have really turned that program around and have done well.
It's amazing how far the soccer program has come, boys and girls.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I'm the, yeah, no, it's, it's done well.
For years, we had girls coming here to be special coaches for my soccer team, because we had a number of girls living with us who played a lot more serious soccer. You know, they were on the U.S. national team and the Canadian national team, and it was amazing how the girls, certain drills, I would have to almost tie them down to get them to do header drills and all. Girls came, they show them a header drill, and next thing you know, every girl's fighting to do it.
That's right, yeah.
But it was really super to see the enthusiasm. And back then, we played soccer from August to June, so we were playing, you know, almost 10 months a year.
Yeah.
Until they got to high school, so... So it's great to see people getting into different areas.
Yeah.
One of the things that always comes up is what I call profanity. Use of the word two and a half override and debt exclusion. Most profane words to a finance committee member in Milford we can hear. How do you feel about two and a half overrides?
Well, luckily in our town, we really haven't had to use them. So I feel great, you know? No, our finance committee, so I've been a town meeting member for a couple of years. I wanted to give back to the town and that's when I started kind of poking around at all these committees. And Milford has always been, I think when I realized how financially stable we were was 2008 in the recession when all the local school districts were laying teachers off, but Milford didn't. And I realized, wow, we have a pretty stable plan. And a few years later, I started reaching out to some friends like, hey, I want to give back to Milford because I want to keep us stable. Because this is amazing that all these other districts had to do two and a half overrides and teachers were being laid off and those, you know, it was sad. And Milford weathered this storm. And our finance committee does an amazing job. And so how do I feel about it? If we need to use it in the future, you know, we'll address it when we get there. But right now, there's no, I don't see any need for us to use it because we plan ahead. I know the school committee was submitting five-year capital plans to the finance committee recently. And so as long as we keep planning ahead and, you know, keep our heads down and focus on managing the finances, I don't see a need in the foreseeable future that we'll ever need to use a two and a half override unless, you know, something really bad happens, but...
Well, we've got $31 million tucked away in town halls, so...
Yeah.
It'd have to be very bad before we'd have to go out and, you know, ask for an override.
Yeah. And I encourage anybody watching tonight to become a town meeting member. Town meeting really controls the finances of the town and we, you know, we need to keep that body growing and stable because at the end of the day, that is the body that keeps the finances running.
It's amazing. So many times when we've had these debates, and I'm on record, so, to say, when it comes to our kids, I don't need anybody from Beacon Hill or Capitol Hill to tell me how to take care of Milford kids. Town meeting has always come up with the right balance. And our kids always seem to get the better end of the deal. So I agree with you. We need desperately to have a full town meeting of totally divergent views.
Yeah, yeah, I'd agree. I, you know, being a town meeting member and seeing how we react to budget and whatnot, I generally feel that if especially the school district says, hey, town meeting, we need this and we have a plan behind it and here is the investment and here is how it'll benefit our community, I feel very strongly that town meeting will support that every time. We just need to see a plan. There was a couple of town meetings ago where the school actually came for some money for the science department and there was no plan. And it didn't even make it to town meeting. It was pulled back. And so being a school committee member, I want to make sure that the school committee is talking to the finance committee, who's very supportive of the school system, and that there's a plan. So when the finance committee sees it, they can go ahead and recommend it favorably to town meeting. And I think that's, in the past couple of years, that communication between the school committee and finance committee and the town has, there seems to be a wall or at least some resistance. And I want to make sure that when I'm on the school committee that I work that and tear that wall down, basically. So there's that, there's that, you know, clear communication line.
And we've been lucky because we may not always agree with the school committee, but to this day, I don't remember, at least, I've been there a couple of decades, having a floor fight with the school committee. You know, we've never gone to town meeting saying, we've fallen and we can't get up. We can't agree what's best for the kids in the town, so you make the decision. And, you know, I feel really good about that. Now, there's heated discussion in preparation, but when push comes to shove, it always seems that we come up with an agreement with the school committee.
Yeah, I would agree.
I mean, knowing that finance committee, in my mind, is the most influential powerless people in that room.
It's true, though. They are, they're, you know, I think, what, there's 11 of them or...
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah. So it's a big group. So you get that kind of diverse group who are looking at the finances and having good, strong debates on, you know, where the, how to manage the money. And so I think town meeting generally has a pretty strong trust in that group. And so if finance committee says favorable, I think most of the town meeting is going to be like, hey, you know what? That group is 15 great citizens who have worked hard to say yes. And so I think the culture of town meeting is very good. We have a good process set up and some trust built into that group that if, you know, finance committee says yes, favorable, then we feel, all right, they've gone through the tough discussions.
Well, we've got some heavy discussions to be had. I was very proud of the way we did Woodland. $61 million and we could go to town meeting and say, here's the plan to pay for it and no profanity, you know?
Yeah.
For eight years, we kept saying, as people said, why are you putting money away? Why are you putting this much money away? There's a school coming. In the last two years, I've gotten hit again. I keep saying, there's a school coming. There will always be a school coming.
Right.
So if we don't take the next six years and save it, regardless of what school, we're going to have a new school coming.
Yeah, and we need some.
What do you think next school should be?
All of them? No, I'm kidding.
No.
No, so I actually...
Don't laugh. Somebody proposed a $400 million raise to do three schools at once.
Yeah, that's crazy. I recently toured Memorial. I haven't been there in a long time and I stopped by a PCO meeting just to learn more about the, what's going on in the schools. I've been going to school committee meetings and PCO meetings the past few months. And Memorial is aging and it needs help. And they're bursting to seams. They just don't have, talking to their principal and assistant principal, they don't have room for kids right now. They're talking about, you know, putting, if you remember, they used to have those portable...
The modulars.
Yeah, the modulars, yeah.
Across the street in the parking lot.
I was overhearing a conversation where that was coming up again. And I'm like, wow, that's not right. You know, we need to fix this. And this school is, it's an old school. So I have a strong opinion on what school should be first. That I think is a deeper discussion with the superintendent and his staff as well as the town. But I do think our facilities need preventative maintenance and a plan to replace them appropriately. Memorial seems to be one of the oldest right now. I know Stacy's been having problems, which I would love to get deeper into because of all the renovations we did, you know, 20 years ago. And so that, I have some strong questions on that one. And then Brookside will need some. So, and then, of course, the high school. So we need, again, a preventive maintenance plan to make sure that they're being maintained properly. And then we also need a plan to replace when needed, you know? And so the question is when? I don't have that answer.
Well, it was interesting because for many years, Kevin, our superintendent, it was funny because he brought it up. He said, I know some of you keep nudging us that we've been adding one child per year. And when you think of the growth of Milford, it was hard to believe we only added one child per year to the school system. But in '74, the first year the class graduated out of that new high school, there were 222 kids.
Wow.
I was one of them.
Yeah.
Last year, there was 260, or two years ago. So you do the 40 years, scary to think I've got my 45th reunion coming up, you know? But you do the math and that was one kid a year. What are we going to do now? The last, I mean, this year, we added almost 200 kids.
Yeah.
Any ideas on how we deal with this?
This is a good discussion and a needed discussion coming from, I think, it needs to be driven by the school committee because they need to be the focal point between the superintendent and staff and the town because we need more space. And there needs to be some temporary relief of that while there's a larger plan. So I don't have an answer for you today because I do think this is a larger discussion that the school committee needs to be the center of and bringing the town together with the superintendent and his staff to say, hey, how do we solve this problem as a community? Because again, this is not just a district problem, this is a community problem.
Well, when you think about, this year, we're adding almost 200 kids. A Brookside holds 300 and change. You're adding half of a school in one year. Last year was 100-some kids. So you're basically, in a little over two years, you're taking the capacity of a Brookside and Memorial and using it up.
Yeah.
We've got to do something.
Yeah, and I think that's another reason why I'm very interested in the school committee because from a community perspective, town meeting perspective, that I don't see a plan from the district saying, here's how we're dealing with this. I feel it's very reactive right now. And it's, that creates tension in our community at all levels. And I saw, I think, there needs to be a strong plan. And the superintendent needs to be the person driving that plan with the school committee. And as, again, a community member, I want to know what that plan is. I want to proudly send my daughter to Milford Schools, which I will. But I also want to push on them saying, hey, you know, what's your plan? We keep adding these kids and growth in town is great, but what's our plan?
Growth is great as long as it's managed.
Correct.
Because if you're not managing it, that's when you get 40 kids in a classroom or...
Yeah.
And, you know, we may have to go back to the dreaded portables, you know, for a short time, but hopefully that's a real short time.
Yeah.
In your mind, are there any programs you think we should be adding to the school district?
So in general, I think Milford, comparing to other towns around our area, we offer a lot of programs. We really do. When you really kind of think about, you know, the sports programs we have, we have a fantastic music department, you know? We have a strong foreign language department for the whole district. We have a lot of programs out there. So as far as adding, I think, you know, and this is, I come from an IT background. I would like to see a bit more focus on the sciences. You know, adding something, add a district-wide program. It's called, it's a first competition. It's a US, it's a robotics program that is actually, they have a whole curriculum from elementary all the way through high school. And it's a national program where they compete. They basically build little robots and they start like with Legos. And it brings them up through, you know, the grades into actual, you know, robots where they work with, you know, corporations like, you know, EMC Dell or, you know, they bring in engineers to help host the team and whatnot. So those type of programs, you know, that comes to mind. I think that adds some enrichment and also adds some appeal to the Milford school system. And I think that the sciences definitely, I would add programs more focused towards the sciences.
Now, when we start looking at certain areas, we do better than others. But when I think of the overall student population, how do you think we do in taking care of our top 10%, our next Nobel laureates?
That's a really good question. I think we do a pretty good job. You know, we have a strong, I know at the high school, again, I hear a lot about the high school because of my wife. So we have, you know, strong AP teachers and programs. So we do have the enrichment needed for those kids who wanted, who can excel a bit more. You know, we, I think we do a pretty good job.
I mean, I'm really proud of it because my senior year, I got banished from Milford High. Not in a bad way. Uncle Paul, our principal, Paul Raftery, probably one of the most superb educators, pulled three of us aside and said, we're out of science courses. We said, okay, what do we do? He says, I'm sending you to Dean Junior College to take two courses, which was fantastic. But now that I look back on it, shame on us for not having courses that we could take in high school. And now I see all these AP courses and even just advanced studies that kids are virtual classroom, competing, working with kids across the country.
Yeah.
That makes me feel great for our top 10%.
Yeah, no, I was in Franklin High School recently, actually judging this academic decathlon. And I was walking through their, their school and was walking by this lab and it said robotics lab. I was like, wow, that's...
In a high school?
In a high school. And I was like, that's amazing. And my thought was, why don't we have one? Because we have the capability to do that in our town. And I was exposed to robotics when I was in high school, actually with, over at BBT, you know? And so I think we do a pretty good job having more enrichment programs. Of course, we can do better, but I think the focus really needs to be, you know, getting, you know, our scores back on track and focusing on those disadvantaged students to making sure that they're getting a good, solid education. Because those kids who are the top 10%, they're, they know how to push themselves and learn. But I think my focus is going to be really focused on that disadvantaged group of language learners.
And we'll get to them. Let me ask you.
Yeah.
There's a group of kids, and I'm not unbiased in this. My father came over from Portugal to Milford. If you put him in an organic chemistry class, he would have not done well.
Yeah.
He had his four years of school total and then went to work to support the family. But if you put a tool in this man's hands, he was an artist. I was constantly amazed at what he could do with his hands. But today, he would have never gotten the chance. Because to get into BBT, I mean, what Dr. Fitz, what Mike Fitzpatrick has done with that school is amazing. You know, when you look at the scores and all, but you've got to be in the top 10, 15% of your class...
Yeah.
Academically, to get into the vocational track. What do you do with people who are smart, driven, but not academic?
So I actually have pretty strong feelings about this one because I think you just hit a, hit the nail on the head. When I found out recently that BBT, you have to be in the top 10% academically, and then I also found out that their college participation rate is very high. I wouldn't say it bothered me, but it surprised me because it's a trade school and you can do very well in the trades. And I think there's a hole right now where we, as a community, Milford and surrounding, that we don't have a trade school to send these kids who want to learn trade. And they will do very well in a trade. And so I know in the high school, they've been talking about just that. Maybe, you know, and it's, I know for an administrator or a teacher to say this, but, you know, college is not for everybody. And I think in the 80s and 90s, there was this big push, college, 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 college. And I think now we're pulling back on that, that gas pedal saying, hey, wait a minute. You know, if you want to be an electrician, you can do very well being an electrician and that's okay, you know? And so I do think there's a big...
You can be proud...
Very proud, yeah.
...of being an electrician, a plumber, a biotech operator.
Yeah, no, I...
We can't find enough. You know, when I, when I had a plant, a biotech CMO up in Worcester, the hardest thing was finding qualified kids. And some of them are coming out of college and it's costing me 50, 60 grand. I mean, I would not be ashamed of a $60,000 salary coming out of school. You know, it's something to be very proud of and you're infinitely employable. But what do you, how do we deal with this?
Yeah, you know, I remember back in the day in the high school, we had the trade shops. And I would love to learn about the current principal and his staff if we should do something with that again. Again, it comes down to space. I don't know if we have the space, but I definitely think there's a good conversation we had about, you know, how do we kind of identify kids who want to be in the trades and then get them to somewhere where they can learn the trade? And I think, again, BBT's done fantastic. However, we now have a gap because that, that trade learning is not as available as it used to be.
Like you mentioned, you can't get in. Like you mentioned, you can't get in.
Yeah.
You know, my father would never get into BVT, because he wouldn't have the academic credentials to say, let me in to be a tradesman.
Yeah. And they have the opportunity to pick the best from all their participating--
13 schools.
13 schools. And so I think it's a little skewed right now, where, you know, they're going after their top tier. And again, the school's an amazing school, but it's now left, there's this gap.
It feels like it's a magnet school now, not a vocational school. You know, that you're trying to pull your top, and, you know, you cannot fault the results.
No.
95% of the kids graduating or more, you know, going to college, doing well at college, kind of hard to say you're not doing something right. But like you say, there's that doughnut hole.
Yeah, like, how are we going to produce the next generation of electricians and plumbers and, you know, and--
Carpenters and everything.
Yeah. And right now, there is a shortage.
How do you think we do with the kids who are special needs, that need a little extra help getting to the middle, to the median?
So I actually think Milford does really well. The surrounding communities, if they have a special needs child, where do they send them? They send them to Milford. I mean, we have an amazing program here, you know? I'm one of them. I was a, I guess, a special needs kid. I had a severe stutter. And I was in speech therapy for 15 years, or close, from basic kindergarten all the way through senior in high school. And Milford had the speech, you know, pathologists and therapists to help me through learning, you know, how to deal with stuttering. And it was difficult. Even talking right now, I have to think about what I say because of stuttering. And so Milford was able to provide me that resource to, you know, be able to speak in public and not be afraid and not stutter. Our special needs programs are fantastic. Of course, we can always make them better, but I think in comparison to surrounding communities, we are one of the best.
Now, one of the things that's been thrown at our face over and over is that because we have such a strong program, we're helping kids that come from other towns. What would you answer if somebody threw that in your, because if you're a school committee, they will.
Yeah. Again, I always focus on the children. If a child comes to my doorstep and says, I need help, who am I to turn them away? And so if we have the resources in our town, then I don't think we should turn them away. I think this should be a point of pride. Yeah.
You know, it's amazing, because I just looked at a couple of people, and I said, you know, if on the way to helping Milford kids, I happen to help some kids from neighboring schools, I don't find that too bad.
No. It raises us up, and we're doing the right thing, the moral thing. So as long as we manage the budget well and--
Well, but that's it. I mean, I'm not going to go out and take money out of the Milford budget to help kids from other towns specifically. Not my role. I'm supposed to take care of Milford kids. But if I can help some kids along the way, I have a hard time when people say that's not a good thing. They're kids.
Yeah, of course.
Last set of questions. If you could change one thing in the school system, do you have any idea what that would be?
That is a good question. Yeah, again, coming back to the English learners, one thing I could change, I guess not change, but implement, I would like to see a very strong foreign language department, district-wide, where we, as a community, can say, you know, our kids are graduating bilingual and trilingual, and that's a source of pride for us here in Milford. And to me, that's what's been driving me towards the school committee, is that I hear a lot about these English learners and these negative comments. And I'm like, are you kidding me? We could set these kids up to be bilingual, so when they graduate school, they can be translators, they can jump into the real world.
But just even business.
In business, oh, absolutely. And so I think, you know, well, I know, being on school committee, big focus is going to be that. This is not a negative, this is a positive. But we need a plan. And so what is that plan? And driving the superintendent and staff to come up with a plan and helping them, and then working with the town as a large community is going to be one of those things I'm going to be very passionate about.
We got a lot of grief last year, I think it was last year or the year before, about investing $600,000 into a Milford SWAT team to protect our schools. Any comments?
That's a touchy one.
Of course.
We need to protect our schools reasonably, right? Meaning that we need to assess the threat and then plan accordingly. Being in the Marine Corps, that's a lot of what we did. You would assess the threat and then plan accordingly. And you have to do it physically responsible, because you can't plan for everything.
Right.
But you have to have a plan and plan accordingly. And so if the law enforcement experts, basically our chief and his staff, said, hey, we need this, then we need to listen to them.
I think they swayed us when they said, we're part of the regional SWAT program.
Yeah.
It takes, on average, 42 minutes to get to Milford. The average horrible incident has been over an 18.
Yeah.
And I remember looking at our chairman, saying, Chris, God help us if something ever happened, and we didn't support this. How could we ever look at the parents to say, we protected some of our surplus, but we've lost kids?
Right. So again, going back to my comment, is if the law enforcement experts said, we need this, and as long as we manage the budget and it's physically responsible, then I absolutely am for it. I know having the police in the schools is, I think it's a great thing. The kids get to interact with police more at a community level, which I think we need more of in general, is, you know, police officers are there to build relationships, not to always enforce. And I think having the police in the schools more to build those relationships, I think, is very powerful for our community.
Last question, as we come to the end of the show. Mike, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
I'm a husband, I'm a father, I'm a veteran in the Marine Corps, you know, a former business executive, entrepreneur, business owner. I have a strong toolbox of skills to bring to the school committee to help, you know, manage the budget, hold the superintendent and his staff accountable for the funds that were invested in them as taxpayers, and some great fresh ideas to, you know, solve our English learner issues and bring a positive perspective on that.
Well, thank you. One, thank you for your service. As always, anybody who puts their life on the line to make our town, our country, better deserves a thank you, even though it sounds corny.
My honor.
Secondly, thank you for being one of the people who not only says it could be better, but says, I'm willing to step up and try and make it better. We don't have enough of those. Even in here, the center of the universe, Milford, we need more people that stand up and say, I'm willing to help. I hope that if anything, you learn enough about each of the candidates to pick one you feel comfortable with. After all, as he mentioned, you've got eight to 10 hours a day that the school committee is designing your child's life. And anybody who's had a high schooler, trying to catch them for a couple hours, you're lucky. So please come out and vote. Please exercise the most important right you have. Even if you don't have children, it does affect property values. It does affect what people think about our town. And as always, to our six loyal viewers, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thank you.[1772.69][1772.69][music]
Far too long since I've been home. Been running my life just to search for my soul.[1775.69][1775.69][music]